All right, I'd like to open the agenda for the select board meeting on August 11th. Um, six o'clock. I'd like to begin with warrants. Is um Charlotte on?
Yes.
Charlotte, you can hear us okay?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I'd like to begin with payroll and I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll number 10 for $2,433.06. So I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number 11 for $27,977.88. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'd like to move that we accept payroll number 12 for $2,068.34. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And lastly, I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number 13 for $23,803.12. Do I have a second? All in favor? All right, I'd like to move that we accept the minutes for July 28th, maybe 25th, select one meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Hmm. Let me go somewhere. All right, next is citizens issues. We have several citizens here. Um, and I'd like to start with one who was here earlier and that was Ted Christie, who asked about putting up a bulletin board at the ferry landing with information about the different fishing rules and regulations and whatnot. So he said he would be willing to build it and set it up. But he said every year he gets information from DMR about fishing regulations and whatnot. It makes more sense to have it there at the, at the ferry length. So I'd like to approve his moving forward with that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, all right, we will let him know to move forward with that. Um, other citizens issues. All right, Mario.
Want to find out where we stand with the jump shot.
You know, and I, and I have to be honest with you. I have not been able to get there. I had some issues that I was having to deal with. So I, I can't give you an update on that, except that I'm.
Do you think it's time? You know, this thing started with George.
Mm-hmm.
We know where.
Last I checked, he was working.
He was here and each time he gives you a story. I remember I was here when he came in January that it would be cleaned up January 15th. Then he made with the.
Gary.
Call it, call it, wasn't it, was November 15th, then you send him a letter. And each time it comes up with a story and you guys believe it. I think you should tell him that's the way it should be. One time I was late with my payment for the end for the real estate taxes. Two days later, there was a lien on here. I came and paid it right away. So I don't know why it can't work. I mean, it's on two different terms, about three years burnt. That's nine years clean something up. I pointed out all, I went through the local laws. There was four or five option to attack it. Then you went for the state door. But nothing happened. It just tells you a story and you say, thank you very much.
Last I checked, he was, he had one building up and was working on putting the others up. And I haven't.
Another two years for the next building?
No, and I, and I apologize, I haven't checked. It's not done, obviously.
He gave him the permit for three buildings. I remember that. When was that?
That was, it was two years ago.
There's one. There's still lots of lawnmowers and tractors that leak oil. Was supposed to put it in a safe place. Neighbor still doesn't bring the water off his well.
And I have talked.
What should it take?
Yeah.
What can I do?
I have talked to the neighbor. He is not even going to have his water checked. He's just depending. He's been doing this for years and he says.
I understand, but that's not correct.
Yep, I.
I think he should be at a well, he should be able to consume his water.
Yep, I, I will make a, I will commit to going there this week just to see where he is with that and get that. I, I just, I was going there pretty regularly and just.
I understand, but I don't know how to go there. You should tell him.
Well, if I go there, then I can see what he.
Supposed to be.
Yeah, I can see what he does have.
He was here. Then three days, it's nothing there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I will commit to going there because if I see it, then I, then I can have a conversation with him. And that, I, I know I have not been in the, in the past few weeks, so just.
It's difficult, but I think if, if you, people just love that you guys, they do whatever they want. I'll give you a little story, but that shouldn't be like that.
Any comments or anything? Nope. Okay, um, I will check it out and.
Will be back?
I'm, I'm sure. Yeah, all right. Jeff, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I, my question is about, uh, when you be able to report on what we're, what we're going to do about property assessments? Or maybe not in terms of setting the tax rate forward. Are we going to do anything to adjust the valuations because of the undervalued status of our current assessments?
We did. We, uh, our assessment agent sent in a report to the state and was approved for, got us up to 100%. I think it was a 10% factoring. Um, but after that, I don't know what to do with the numbers.
So plan is to do a 10% factoring, is that across the board or is that?
Mm-hmm, he said it made sense to do that. Next year, we're going to do the revale. And yeah, he kind of explained if we don't do something this year, it makes the next year even worse. Yep. So we're trying to kind of spread it out until we do the revale.
I guess.
And we're doing, the commitment, we're hopefully, hopefully going to be getting done by the end of this month.
Is that report available for some analysis you do?
I haven't even seen it. Don't know.
Uh, just my, my concern is from the previous time we did a process, realizing that I, I think we were hurting the people who are not shorefront, the people whose evaluation is not increasing as much by doing our crossing board.
And I think he, we kind of asked about that, um, you know, to try to balance out the, the value of shore, shorefront as opposed to inland. And he said that at this point, that would be a lot of work. And I think he's looking more forward in terms of getting us to a place where we can just, you know, kind of work it out for the next year and a half until we do the revale. And then, you know, obviously. There's no easy way to, to, to get there.
It was going to take a little.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I know, it's just, it's, it's partially healing. There was actually that moment a couple of years ago because it did impact some people more, um, I know it a little unfairly. So I was hoping next time we did, that it would be, kind of last year, it actually was somewhat appropriate because you fixed the problem. And that actually brought a lot of undervalued properties up, up in value, including unfortunately for myself, a lot, you know, impacted.
All of us.
But it was appropriate, uh, for, but, uh, that's.
Yeah.
Just to address that, that concern, I think it's going to be tough for some people with their taxes and, and.
And unfortunately, the bottom line is the spending increased. So, yeah, that's really the, the.
That's the biggest thing this evening.
Yes, yes.
All right, next, um. Were you just visiting?
I'm just visiting.
All right, and you are?
I'm Jody Burgess.
And you're from? Just one of the townspeople?
Yeah.
Welcome. Welcome. And.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to touch base on your note we had today about getting a process in place for any potential violations that come up during the revaluation process and maybe having a deputy that sort of takes the, takes the lead role of doing that. So we're separating from the general duties. And I was, I was a little confused by the wording. The way you're, you're phrasing was like, we didn't have a deputy that is in a position to do that. We, we do and we are. So it sounded like you were, you were, you were posing the question as to whether or not we should be looking for, looking for somebody to fill that role. So I just wanted to have a conversation and see what, what you people are thinking about that.
Well, first of all, my comment was that we're looking, we, we have interest and we are looking at the potential of another deputy. Not, not, and if we think that when the revale comes, there's going to be more work. There was no intention that a person would be just doing revale work. We just feel like there's going to be a lot more need for a CEO. And that, um, that, it, it, as I said, we've had interest, people that are coming here that are interested in the position. And so we are trying to be proactive as well and say, you know, maybe it wouldn't hurt us to have another, um, another deputy, especially because the present deputy was retired. And, um, so I don't know how long he wants to remain in that job. But if we have somebody young and interested in we, if we have more of a need. Um, but, but there was no conversation or no intent to say that you would have, we would have a deputy CEO that would only take care of revale stuff. But we do anticipate being more of a need for CEO issues because we anticipate a lot of questions being asked. I mean, we know what happened last year and there were a whole bunch of questions that were asked. But now that we're going to be doing the revale and people actually going there and, and, you know, making adjustments, that there'll be a, a bigger need. And so we want to be proactive and say, if there is interest in having another deputy, that it probably wouldn't hurt us to investigate it. And that was when I asked whether there was, um, anything in, in past. I think April had done some, um, research and found that there wasn't even anything in any of the warrants that said that we could have a deputy, much less two deputies.
As in the neighborhood administration, that, that position of proof, the person who was created. Uh, that's where, that's where you'll find that. It's not in the local ordinances.
Well, according to the MMA, you cannot have a deputy unless it's in your stat, your ordinances that you have deputies, which is not. Or, um, it was passed a town meeting, which I'm not positive. I haven't combed through all those, but, um, do you remember that being on the town warrant? Because if not, we should do it soon so that, um, Ron Studley has, you know, the basis he needs to have authority as a deputy. His MMA's point is if anyone challenges something Ron did, that's the first thing they're going to look at is need to be a deputy. So we want to have a special town meeting to get that done.
Yeah, you would think that part of the certification of a state would involve that.
I know. I asked, I was like, are you sure? This seems crazy. Like why other positions can have deputies and they're like the CEOs? It is fuzzy and our strong recommendation is to put it on a town meeting warrant so that nobody can take you to court.
Oh, I'm sure it's a strong recommendation. It sounds like I have another response. All of your label and multiple solutions says the town should appoint an annual code enforcement officer, officer of deputy. So, um, I don't know what I, I don't specifically recall, you know, the law and I would be offering a deputy position, but I would be, I would be highly respectful if anybody said having a deputy was, I did not. Anyway, back to my initial point. I mean, it's, uh, you know, the way, the way you first questioned me. It's a, it's a pretty significant commitment to put yourself in a position where you have the certifications and the cards to do that. And to go out, to go out and, and search for a, for another deputy without at least having a conversation with the county. Uh, I think we'd be able, or we'd be able to.
Yeah, and we're, we're not actively searching. Somebody came to us. And, um, and that's why I wanted to have a conversation with you because then we, we ask it, it's like, can, can we have one deputy? Can we have?
Right. Can I clarify? You're not seeking to replace Ron.
Right.
You're seeking an additional position.
Right, in anticipation of.
He may, he may be perfectly fine with saying, yeah, if you could find somebody else to do it, had that.
Yeah, and I have not had any with him. I started with you just to say, you know, anything about, are there any rules or regulations that talk about, um, having deputies? Um, and, uh, and like I said, somebody came to us. It wasn't like we're out advertising and.
So we have a certified, certified inspector?
No, the somebody who's interested in becoming certified and is aware of the issues related to that. So we haven't pursued anything more other than when the individual came to us. They said, okay, we need to start asking some questions. And that's when, um, April did a little research as well to say, you know, can, can you have even more than one deputy? And, um, you know, and, and it would be interesting to, to, to talk to Ron, but, um, you know, I wanted to start with you just to see, you know, what, what you knew and what you thought about it. You know, I, I know Ron was retired before we asked him to to take on this role. And, you know, he may be thrilled to say, yeah, I can go back to being retired. He may say, you know, I will do it, start doing it.
The other aspect, my perspective is you don't want to casually throw institutional knowledge. And that people have been involved with the town government for like three, four, five decades.
But we're not throwing out the, the CEO for sure. It's just looking to get some kind of support and anticipation.
I think it makes perfect sense to have somebody exclusive to them at all, of its philosophy. Um, because there probably is going to be a significant amount of work. I think it can work as well as you. Um, there really ought to be a, you know, clearly defined process in place, including expenses. You know, you're a per violation or potential violation and, and a revaluation. I mean, there should be X amount of laws to do the investigation. And then once that can complete, if there is a violation, then there's the whole after the fact application fee process. If it, if it can be approved, you know, it's a, it's a more punitive application fee. And you, you three would decide if then, you know, give it a damn, we just. And if it can be, then we gotta.
Yep, but, you know, we hadn't talked at all about having a person simply be in that role. But that is something that I think we would learn to talk about now. Um, because we do need to get ready for next year and, um, and we want to be proactive, be ready for it. And, um, and not all of a sudden when we get a bunch of, um, people complaining or whatever, and then we have to figure it out. Because monetarily with fines and that kind of thing, that's already been an issue for us. It's been an issue for several years. So, uh, it's something that, that we are working on this year for sure. Um.
And you can't really, you know, we have like a schedule of fines because of every, every circumstance.
Is different, yeah.
After anything, it's my mind that, that's, that's. Now, I think there should be a, uh, an initial process that's asked with some because violations, violations are significantly more time consuming.
Because. Yes, yeah. Yeah.
Typical applications.
Yeah, and actually better deal.
Code enforcement role that is funded by application of these.
Right. Right, which is a conversation we had with you before. It's like if you're only pay when you do a permit and all of a sudden we have all these, um, violations and they don't involve a permit, then we're asking you to do all this work and yet you're not getting anything for it. So, um, so, yeah, we want to think about this some more, but, um, you know, I posed a question of you, just if you knew anything about it. We'll do a little bit more research to find out whether we should go ahead and do a special town meeting. Just to cover our behinds. Um, and, um, and then we'll, we'll have some more discussions about it. But I think if, if we want to have somebody who specific to that role, then we probably need to get them started sooner rather than later. Just to, to get them trained and up to speed. So, um, so we'll be, we'll continue to be in contact. And if you have thoughts and, you know, we can have a, a, a regular Thursday afternoon conversation about it if you want. Um, after next week, we have one more, uh, two more weeks of, uh, meetings with community committees.
Is it this week?
Harbor.
Harbor. We have one this week. Oh, oh, I think, actually, I think this week or last week.
Yeah, this is our last, yeah. Yeah.
Alter, should be.
You should know. Yeah.
You do now.
You sent out an email. She sent out an email to the list, but I'll make sure you're, you're definitely on my list.
Yeah, if you, if you sent it to me, then I sent it to you.
But.
See it.
Yeah, it would have been several weeks ago when we, because I was setting up all of the committees.
Um, they're meeting at five, Thursday.
On Thursday.
Here, yeah, together with the select board to sort of get their officers elected.
Yeah, so definitely if you're an alternate, it would be helpful. Um, Gary, anything else to add before, do we just need more conversation? We want to start the conversation, let you know that we're at least looking into this. Um, and then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll keep having some conversations. This isn't like, oh yeah, we made a decision, we're going to go out and find somebody. But if there is interest, um, then we also needed to look at what it would take. And maybe Josh could give us some information about that, about in the past, what is it required when somebody does a revale? And, um, you know, anticipated, um, number of issues or how that's been handled by, by others. So that'll, because this is the first one that, where we're involved with the, with the rebound. So I think it'll be a big learning experience for all of us, but hopefully we'll be a little proactive. Anything else to add?
Keep the planning board and the board of subpoenas busy.
Yeah.
But we'll get through them.
Yep.
I just checked my, I'll leave the memo office till I can sit down, so. Getting to my desk, if we, we are maybe one hour's time.
We'll have to check on more.
We don't have time travel.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anybody else?
I have one.
Okay.
This is from my husband, actually. He took some oil to the, it was passive transfer station. Um, it was, it had some water in it and they wouldn't accept it. And he was quite upset about that because he's like, what am I supposed to do with it? Dump it in the water table? What do I do with it? You know? Um, so he wanted to bring that to your attention. It was like, I pay taxes and I can't get rid of this stuff.
It's motor wound?
I don't know.
And they won't accept it because they burn it in their furnace.
Exactly. That's what they did when they said it can't run a burner. And he's like, why do I care? He said, you're the truck, where else do I take it? So he was, he's kind of in a bind, you know? He's got the big truck, so he's trying to be responsible and take care of the waste the right way. And, uh, they wouldn't take it.
Antifreeze, gasoline, they, they don't take.
Yeah, they're trying to get rid of it.
Right, clean hivers.
But isn't there a place, I, I thought, I thought the recycling places require that they take that kind of stuff?
They don't take old gas, they don't take antifreeze and they don't take.
What do you go if you have that old paint?
Old paint, H4.
Yeah, you have to, uh, if, if you need to dry it out or add a, something to make it to a solid, then they'll take it.
Do you know where Jim could take oil that's got water in it?
How much oil is it?
It's in a bucket, I think. It's in a bucket, I don't know. I don't know.
Right, uh, let me check around.
Yeah, okay. I don't know. He says it's like pretty, it gets mixed together.
Well, you leave it outside, it'll, it'll separate, it'll separate.
Yeah.
It will separate. But I know God's marriage alone. Does he just fuss with us?
Yeah, I told him, I'm like, I don't know, there's a lot of stuff they don't take. So I don't know if it'll be different.
But there's got to be a place in, it would be something that I think would be good for the town to know, maybe in some kind of bulletin or something. But where do you take things?
Only place I know that takes antifreeze is clean hivers.
Where?
Clean hivers we brought.
Well, not hard there.
In Portland.
Yeah, it's not cheap. I get a gallon, sit in my garage for, you know. I can't remember. I did know what the price was and it's more expensive than buying a brand new off the shelf. That I do know.
Well, I remember looking to figure out where we could take old computers and whatnot. And I'd been trying to, to figure out how to donate them and whatnot.
The transfer station, they'll, they'll charge you money for them, but.
Yes.
You just take the hard drives out, don't give them hard drives. Where you don't even just, I, I tend to take the hard drives all apart.
Yeah, yeah.
Even cool 97, you know, too.
Yeah, and it wound up that they took printers, everything, except they charged for the laptops, $5 apiece. But, but at least they took them, but they don't advertise that they take them. Um, so that was, that's why I was sort of surprised that they don't take the oil with water and.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. I mean, it's good that somebody is being careful enough that they don't want to just throw it in the.
Well, it's better than, what? I mean, they used to spread it on the roads to keep the dust out.
Yeah.
Beats that alternative.
Yeah.
But if anybody's got a dust complaint, they don't mind, we're a model on it. I know where you can get some, because I ain't never been.
All right, um, let's move on to roads.
Wait, did you have concern over speeding?
Oh, yes, I did. Um, we have gotten quite a few complaints about speeding and road rage. Surprisingly, now that the roads are paved and they keep coming to us like we're the ones in charge of fixing it. Um, and when we talked to the sheriff, because there was an, an issue with road rage, the sheriff said, contact us. And so that's what we'd like to suggest. If you, if somebody is, is, um, doing road rage with you and.
Get a plate number.
Get a plate number or whatever, but don't come tell us about it because we can't do anything about it. Um, you need to call the sheriff and having a, a plate number would be really helpful. And one individual who complained, who lives on the main road, um, talked one time about the speeding and another time about somebody was trying to run him over. Now, whether that was true or they just weren't paying attention or whatever, but still, if, if you can get the plate number and, you know, that would, that would help. I know there are issues now at the, um, at the light, um, on the bridge. It seems like we can't wait two minutes. Um, and I know there was an issue, it wound up being on Facebook, that somebody ran the light anyways and there was, was car coming. But, um, talk to the sheriff. We can't fix that, that problem. There's just absolutely nothing we can do.
One thing I will add is the new pavement's nice and makes maybe you give the perception that people are going faster, but one thing I learned, when they ground the road and it was dirt, I sat on Gary Cromwell's porch with him. Last day, Gary, I finally found a way to slow them down. He said, no, you didn't. And sure enough, I went skating in there, I could stick the miles down. Uh, and one of the problems we had when the project was going on with one individual that's not an islander, but was working down here. There is some people down here that, that express road rage. I, I've witnessed it myself.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you know me, I ain't picking up the phone.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just, you know, I, it's probably at least once, once a month that I get some comment about road rage for, um, or speeding.
It's ridiculous down here. Nothing gets done about it.
Yeah.
I don't need to know why we have speed with the signs because it's already going to enforce it. What's the point?
Yeah.
Because they're going to be, I'm a kid in a journal and wrote it.
Why don't we complain to the sheriff again?
Yep.
And say, please, 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 please. Order of speed.
Well, especially this time.
Every now and then, maybe.
Yep.
You do pay taxes.
Summer, I think, is worse.
Maybe once a month, send a car down here.
Yeah.
Maybe we should be specific because you usually when we make this lane, the sheriff's cars for a while and then they go away again. Like maybe once a month, randomly?
Yeah.
It's not just, it's everywhere. It's all over the island. It's in this road, it's everywhere. And it used to be you're going 78 miles an hour and a 45 mile an hour. And it used to be you were going seventy, eight miles an hour, and a forty-five mile an hour zone, hold the speed limit, you get a ticket. I witnessed it, they don't even look at me there. If you're going ten over the speed limit, if it's forty-five, you're going fifty-five, they don't even look out from their computer. Seen it right by the MDF.
Yeah, yeah. All right, uh committee, uh. Anything else on roads?
Yeah, yeah. Where we stopped ditching with the road improvement, we ditched from there down through almost to the cistern. Or the brick film.
Yeah.
That's where the tree and the stump, we had to give a man left and cut a tree out. Uh one more day there. Then we're out of there, and then I'm just waiting on the hammer for West Shore Road, which will be probably the first in next month. September, September. That's it, that's been kind of quiet.
Yeah, kind of nice. Uh committee reports? Any update?
Mine first?
Sure.
Uh so on properties, we've got things moving on getting the work done on the buildings that we identified earlier this year. Chris Malley finished pressure washing this building today, with that um paint going on in the next week or two. And that should pretty much take care of it. You did the roof with the treatment for the algae and lichen, and we've pressure washed. We're gonna replace some trim. That door down at the far end needs to get some brick molding replacement done. Um so that's taking place, so moving forward there. Once that's done, and you and I can get back together and get the grading done, then you guys can have a plant people come.
If we ever have rain.
So that's all moving forward. At the town hall, the old town hall, we're waiting for uh Jason Putnam to come back from vacation. And he's gonna come down and give us some estimates on replacing the bad sill over the north side. Um Chris was gonna move down there tomorrow to peel up that siding, probably three and a half, four feet. Up from the ground so that we can see how much damage that actually is. Jason, I'll come in with some numbers. We're holding off on some of the bigger ticketed items that we wanted to put on, like gutters and windows. Because I think we're gonna need the money for the sill, unfortunately, but. So that's kind of where we're at there. We've got Trevor Harris has volunteered to. Install new hot water heaters and take care of the plumbing issues at the old town hall. He'll be here the first week of September. Um so. Slowly rolling forward, but.
They get all the trees cut?
Yeah.
They're all done and out of there.
They're all done, they're out of there.
It's funny when you go by, you don't even, don't.
Really miss them. Because I looked at it so much, but and the sheds are much more visible, because unfortunately, because they're really bad. Um but yeah, it's not, it's not like glaring, like you'd think it may have been, so.
They cut the tree, the worst tree, they must save that one for last.
Good question, which I don't know the answer to. I'll call Jack and ask him.
Yeah, I know.
The extension cord's still laying, so I guess I'm probably not.
Jeff, are you seeing a difference in in the building? Is it um warmer without all the shade?
Well, we don't necessarily know, because of the the heat budget, we're trying to keep it constant temperature and everything.
So then you have all your windows sealed off, so you don't get a speed of sunshine.
So we're basically not, so.
Yeah.
It may not matter a lot, in my sense.
Sleep easier, knowing that the archives, it won't be, it'll always play a turn.
Well, that's true, Matt does, all the ones that are having Jason in that center where he can hear through the house or. So you count the stumps.
Well, you won't be able to count the stumps for long.
Yeah, right.
Eight haven't gone?
Yeah, eight or nine, maybe ten.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah.
The house, I wasn't worried, well, insurance should cover that as the contents.
Well, we agree, but if the if the house gets whacked, your contents will be down, past went off, finally, I'm turning.
I thought you were worried about the poor roof and what it would look like. All right, let's move on to select board business. Um we have uh an amendment to the town committee's policy. There were some uh grammatical changes, um adding some. Uh variances in ordinance helped from the board of appeals purpose. Adding advice to select board on shellfish related matters and to the uh shellfish committee purpose. So basically, those were the changes that we made to that.
Yeah, but it's something that.
You sure can.
Um because the select board has been meeting with committees one at a time to um. Have their organizational meetings, get their officers elected and go over like what to work on. So I realize some of their purposes are pretty narrow, like the shellfish committee is just supposed to um enforce the ordinance. And we also kind of want to hear from them, though, on shellfish stuff, and we kind of were asking them questions and to research things, and that isn't really part of their purpose. Um so. Figured we'd throw it in there, and then the appeals board, um. They often don't have much to do, don't meet very often, um so we had sort of asked them, hey, maybe you guys can help with all of our ordinance stuff we have to work on. On MMA sets, that's one thing you can use your board of appeals for, and we certainly have a lot of ordinances that need review. Got a lot of smart minds on that committee. So um. I wanted to expand their purpose a little bit officially in the policy that as well. So those are the two main changes up there.
So um I'd like to move that we accept the changes to the town committee's policy, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And there's nothing here that we need to sign. All right. Uh adoption of payments policy. Um existing check acceptance policy plus language about charging by the hour for taking longer than five minutes to count. Buts no lose change over five dollars. Uh this sounds like a funny little thing, but evidently in a town not too far from us. Somebody decided to, what, they they weren't happy, so they decided that the way that they're gonna pay their um taxes was to. Give us a bunch of change.
You know, it was a twenty thousand dollar fine, they paid in pennies.
They paid in pennies.
For a violation.
Yeah, so of course that meant the the. Town floor having to sit there for hours and hours counting every single penny, and it sounds like. It was done intentionally to be um. A slap in the face to the town, and before that happens here. We decided to put it in a policy that, no, you cannot um use a bunch of pennies especially, and if it's gonna take. That long to count, if you have a twenty thousand dollar um tax bill and you come in with a bunch of change. Um then it's not gonna be acceptable, or. One of the other options was to say, okay, if we're gonna have to sit there and count it, you're gonna sit there with us, and we're gonna charge you for the time that it takes to do that. Um so basically, we decided on what we landed on is that we can't, you can't bring a bunch of small change to do this. Um just trying to nip it in the bud before it happens.
But would it be legal tender?
Yeah, which is why we set a policy.
It is, and it's fuzzy, so I I researched this a bunch. So there's two parts to this policy, one is no change over five bucks, so just hopefully people see that and not be jerks. But there's a another contingency here. Okay, they they wanna argue legal tender, and we're gonna drag on the lawyers. Okay, fine, we'll count your pennies, we're gonna charge you for the time it takes us over five minutes. So there's kind of two things in there that could stop it, and if someone wants to attack the one, I couldn't really get a clear answer, so. Some legal things said, yeah, you can put limits, like, yes, you have to accept legal tender, but you can limit it. And other things said, no, no, so it just sort of depends, and it's hard to tell. But I wanted to put something in place to protect Ashley, because that's ridiculous and what. It's not harming, you know, people wanna take out their little temper tantrums about taxes, but they're taking it out on staff, who did not have no control for this. And it wastes everybody's time, and it wastes taxpayer money to have staff have to do that.
Although they take account twenty thousand, they have open roles and count every penny.
No, no, this was just a big pile. They got them, brought it in like liberals and dumped it on the floor in the town office.
And I'd like to thank the media for really just reporting on this so loudly. So that other, so that people can get this idea and think it's a good idea. I'd really like to thank the media for that.
It's been going on for years, you. I didn't know the contract, the bag got filled up with one dollar bills, crumpled up, seventy-five hundred of them. But they are fined for cutting a tree, it was half over the lawn.
Yeah, so he was, yeah, and and again, it's the staff who are being punished.
Well, no, when he took it to the lawyer.
Right.
And told him, I want you to count it. Of course, he showed him five minutes to five, I want you to count it, I want a receipt, I want a witness to count it. That was maybe justifiable, but the tax thing is no, under no circumstance would be.
Well, we'd still be counting the fees, like our lawyer from Portland isn't gonna come up here, dude, it's still gonna be Ashley and me.
Right, this was private, private.
Yeah. Well, don't try it here, we will fight you, we will not be happy.
So we're we're hoping that that would never happen here, but you know, we we try to stay on people's good side. Um but also by by the rules and and regulations and whatnot, so. Uh I'd like to move that we accept this uh amended payments policy. Um do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we did, and um there was also a a check acceptance policy, and that has been, it was a policy on that that's been deleted. Because it's covered in the.
We just integrated the old policy in this.
Yeah, it's old one policy, so I'd like to make a motion that we get rid of that uh check acceptance policy, do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Um next was a request. Was a request to um for money. A request to purchase um supplies, this is for Gay. Uh for the archives. Um and um she'd like permission to be able to spend up to eight hundred dollars on storage materials. And um. And according to her note, she says that Jeff said we have fifteen hundred dollars in the history committee reserve account. That we've saved for such purposes.
And it's actually with three thousand.
Well.
That was off the cuff at the meeting.
Yeah, and so I'd like to uh move that we accept her request to um. To get these archival supplies, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right.
I have one comment to make.
Yep.
And that is that Lubeck adopted an agriculture ordinance this week. On the same issue that we've been talking about, going around and around, so there's another town that has actually. Put in an ordinance that is going to avoid allowing big agriculture companies from out of the country to come in and set up shop, so. We've been approached a few times by both protectors that want ordinances and agriculture. Um individuals that want freedom of use of the water, so it's just, it's just gonna be an ongoing issue. I'm just reporting that there is another town that that did an ordinance and.
If you thought about putting in an ordinance limiting the size of an aquaculture, weeks.
So, yes, except, yeah, we have.
Yeah, because we've talked about making sure that it's not, it doesn't become commercialized. And if somebody has a bunch of small ones, and all of a sudden somebody. A bigger company decides that they wanna buy up all these things, that all of a sudden you have, now you have your commercial. Uh oyster business, when you, before you had individuals who were doing their own.
Right, I just thinking like one big twenty acre one, limited in the size of one single for agriculture.
Yeah.
This is out of curiosity, what is the objection of the commercializing?
Well, some of the objections, and there's a number of them when you get looking at it, but one of the biggest ones is that they're using up public water, ways and space. And if you've you've been on the Dammer Scott River, because there's a really good example of it, you know, navigo, the waters. Still remain in the middle in the channel, but you can't go swimming off to the side, you can't go fishing off to the side, it's essentially bunged up totally. With oyster farms, so that's a local sort of an issue. And then in the bigger picture, the industrial aquaculture. Um you get into the whole realm of the diseases, the mismanagement, the introduction of invasives and. And it goes on and on, and I'm not saying that all the companies do it, but there's been enough experience and enough proof that some of them do it. That it's a concern, like we we don't want to get caught. Acting like we never thought about it or never looked into it, because it's it's the potential to be there.
Yeah, so the the fish ones are really loud, really drink the water a lot, so they're, you know, they just have blowers uh blowing, they uh boot into. The vents and they just, you can hear them from like twenty miles away. Uh so the fish ones are abductable. Um they're always, you know, oyster mussels, they all clean the water, so the those don't really have the noise, so those aren't as abductable to people, the fish ones, because. I wouldn't want them, would it point out, just being very loud and very.
Yeah, it's something we're doing some research on, because we actually have had both sides come and do presentations. And made us start to think about um the pros and cons too, and we're we're still having conversations about that. But we we certainly want to encourage. Individuals who want to do their their own thing, you know, we have, I think, four now, four LPA, four people with LPAs. What's that?
You mean like homooccupations?
Yes, yeah.
Oysters also really clean the water off, because they're really, they're good for our environment.
Yeah. I think it was discussed also about oysters and um I don't know the biology of it, but if they escape. They can, they can affect the the aquaculture, there's something you can do so that they they're either. Sensed or or something, there's little things that that can happen, it does affect uh sometimes the the clammy in the area too. If they if they escape and then reproduce, and then you've got these oysters that. This is just one side of what we heard.
Common Dammer Scott, I get my lessons in past years and from uh, you know, the research from the Arab and state moistership, they taste great.
Sure they do.
One fellow that talked about the aquaculture in Brunswick, estimating the clamming movement, which Brunswick was.
Right.
Like the clam capital. The area now is not as much.
Yeah, so there there are pros and cons in both, so we definitely want to encourage small business. Um but we don't all of a sudden then want somebody who now has bought up all the businesses, and now we have a massive commercial. Enterprise going on, so we're we're looking into um, you know, and and what what I've heard from those. Um those guys and ladies is that um our water is so cold. That for, it typically takes about four years to have oysters ready to to eat. Um so a big commercial place might not be as interested. I think you said down in Florida, there was like six months and you've got full grown oysters already, we're here on the island, what's that? Yeah, yeah, that four years makes it taste better, but yeah.
You would know.
Yeah.
Well, it's cold in Brunswick too, and they have a big development.
Right, yeah, but I I think their water is. I'm not sure exactly where their water is, but ev- evidently the water around it, at least down at the lower end of the island, is is pretty chill. And um and it's been taking about four years to to do anything. But but once you get these established and you have something going, and every year you've you've got. You know, and all of a sudden, you've got the potential for somebody buying it all up and saying, now, you know, I'm thinking it. A really nice living doing this um and in taking over all of them, so. It's something we're just starting to look at, um we don't have answers, we we have more questions and just trying to do some research on it. So um September meeting schedule. Um.
I'm good with the Wednesdays.
Okay.
Same to.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's for workshops.
So we'll continue to have our every other Mondays meeting.
Start next week.
Um. But our workshops will change from Thursday to Wednesday um at four o'clock.
Yeah.
That'll be next week.
It can start this week.
Right, because we have a meeting on Thursday, so our next um. Today is the eleventh, our next meeting will be the twenty-fifth of August, and then. Um the eighth and the twenty-second. Yeah. And Jason, we already had you down on the twenty-fifth at five thirty to finish that discussion. Any other announcements for anything else? Then I'd like to move that we adjourned, was I said?
Second.
All in favor?